It is customary that when we begin these hearings, we have a brief opening. And at this particular time, Ms. Jackson will do an invocation. And I believe Mr. Robertson will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If you care to join us, please stand.
Please bow your heads. Father God, we come to you just to say thank you, thanking you for allowing us to be here this glorious day. Father God, watch over each and every one of us that are here today, those that desire to be here that are not here. Bless them as well. Bless our bodies, touch our bodies in the way that you would have it function so that our capacity can be done in your name. These blessings be asked in your name, amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this particular time, I'd like to make a few remarks and comments as we go through the procedures for today. Here again, I want to say welcome to the regularly scheduled public hearing of the Shreveport Cattle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission meeting. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have MPC comment slips at the speaker's stand down front here, next to the podium. For future notification purposes or further notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, your mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allocated for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allocated for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to make comments. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decision on a particular case by contacting our office at 318-673-6480 after 1:00 PM on tomorrow, or by accessing our website at shreveportcattle.com. For consent agenda items and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by filling out an MPC comment slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking action on the agenda item. All of the MPC board's zoning recommendations are submitted to either the city council or the parish commission for a final decision, depending on the location of the property that's in question. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing bodies about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the interway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the MPC board is in session. The commission values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. At this particular time, we'll move down the agenda and call for approval of the minutes of the January meeting. Some of them. It's been motioned by Mr. Curtis, second by Mr. Morton. All those in favor, please vote yes. That motion carries. Thank you very much. As we move forward, we are now want to invite you to your attention to the consent agenda. We have three cases that are on the consent agenda listing. Do we have any comments relative to either one of those in the form of comment slips at this time? All right, hearing none. We all entertain a motion. To approve the consent agenda. Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Joseph and second by Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please vote yes. Oppositions, no. There we go. All right, the motion carries. This particular time, we'll move into our scheduled public hearing cases. The first case that we have is item number nine, case number 21-201-C. Small plan, unit development and site plan. The applicant is Leganita Franchise Operations. Someone present to speak on their behalf.
Aye, present.
Please come forward.
Do I address the commission or do I dress? I'm sorry. I address the commission?
Talk to us.
I apologize.
We're the only ones can vote.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure of following protocol. You can sit up there and show them just that building there. And Brad, I'll be making a change and when I ask you to switch it off, that'd be great. Good. Thank you, Vanna. Vanna White, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you guys for having me here today. I really appreciate the opportunity to address the commission. My name is Damon Dunn. I'm the CEO of Leganita Franchise Operations. It's a company that I started. I own 25 Dunkin' Donuts stores across five states, Alabama, Arkansas, Mississippi, Oklahoma, and now in Shreveport, here in Louisiana. I bought the two existing stores that are here, the one that's on Bossier City, Jimmy Davis Highway, and the one that's on Yuri Road. I paid $3 million for those stores. And Duncan allowed me to sign an eight-store development agreement, which will allow us to be able to invest $16 million into the city of Shreveport throughout all parts of the city. So we'll build an additional eight. There'll be 10 stores. And I think there are some material things that we needed to address in order for this to have your consideration for approval for the rezone from a residential perspective into a commercial controlled planned urban development where you guys have all the control over design for now and into the future. Some of those material considerations, first of all, was how do we approach the planning commission? How do we approach the planning department with the city in a way in which we could also meet the aesthetic of this community and also meet the desire from the neighborhood? We heard a lot of different comments at the neighborhood where people wanted to make sure that we had a certain height on our signage, that we had an enhanced landscape plan, that we met the aesthetic of the community, even though it was not in the actual historic preservation district, but that we actually were able to meet that aesthetic. And we initially thought that a C2 zoning would be appropriate. That's just a natural zoning from a residential to a commercial use. But in all of our discussions, it became very clear that the best option was to go through this planned urban development, which allowed the commission to have control over the design elements and then also all future control and uses that are in that C1 would be more compatible in the future for that site. And so we changed our designation from a C2 to a C1 planned urban development. And we think that was a win for us because it allowed us to show transparency. I think it's a win for the city because it gives you guys the design control for now and forevermore into the future. And we can write in all those controlled elements about the aesthetic, about the signage, about the landscaping, about the pedestrian access, et cetera. Another material consideration was the traffic impact. I don't know if you guys want to have a copy of this, but I went ahead and paid to have a full traffic study done on this intersection. And what's the protocol on being able to pass these out? Here you go. So what you will find, the summary's on page four. And the summary will say that there is no adverse impact on this intersection because, and if you read through the exile report, I put all of the raw data in there. And then all the executive summaries are in there. And we hired a firm that was recommended by a local civil engineer here, Forte and Tumplata. They came in, they used rubber tubes, they looked at our existing stores, they looked at the traffic that was happening there. And the summary conclusion is that we are service oriented. The traffic that is already driving on King's Highway is going to go in and come to our site and then get back on the road and go. So we're not bringing new traffic trips to that intersection. So the traffic engineer that did this plan was a local firm. And they came to the conclusion there would be no adverse impact. And they collected data. You guys will be able to read through that data. So I thought that was a material point. How do we get through the planning? The right way to give the control to the people that need it, which is the city planners and the planning commission? And then what is the, being able to define the real traffic impact as opposed to being able to use anecdotal information and talking about, I know what my store can do and that we just feed off the traffic? So we were able to define that. Another important part of this process was having a meeting with the neighborhood. Although this site is not located in the historic district, it is close enough and there's enough concern from the neighbors for us to make sure that we address those concerns. And during that meeting, we held it at King's Highway Christian Church. King's Highway Christian Church is the owner of the property. And when we were there, we learned a lot at that meeting. I mean, I was there for two and a half hours. I literally got to the end of it and said, listen, I have nowhere to be. If there's any more comments, please give me comments. Every single recommendation that the neighbors made, we took into consideration and conceded to every one of them. I went so far as to say, to the actual neighbors, we took a list of it. I had my civil engineers represented by Tammy over there, that firm, say hi Tammy and Nick. I went so far as to say, let's make sure we take a list of all these concerns. They took lists as we went through them. At the end of the meeting, I said, please read the list back out just so that everyone's in agreement that this is the list. Are there any additional things that you guys want from me in consideration for this development? We had no more comments. And I told them that if I do not do every single thing that I've agreed to do here, that you show up at the MPC meeting and call me a liar and my project does not deserve to be approved. So I wanted to be a man of integrity because this is the first of eight stores that we're going to build. And you never get a second chance to make a first impression. And I wanted to show that I had humility. I wanted to show that I had integrity. I wanted to be a community partner. And I wanted to hold accountability to myself and to my company for the things that we're saying that we're doing. And so I can tell you that we successfully added every single thing that we said that we would do. And I've gone above and beyond. And I think that's critically important for the things we did in neighborhood. I think that I want to point out a few things. One of the concerns in making this look successful here is that the church, King's Highway Christian Church, is wrapped in this specific brick. And we were trying to figure out, because the property runs together. You have King's Highway Christian Church that's at King's Highway and Line, and then it goes all the way over to Thornhill. And so what we decided to do, as opposed to trying to do what Julian's did across the street, which is meet the aesthetic with dormers and peaked roofs, I decided, you know what, to make this work, I'm going to wrap my entire building in the exact same brick that the church is wrapped in. This will be the nicest donut store in the state, maybe the nicest donut store in the country. But I thought, I would bring this to the commission and you would say, wow, I mean, this guy is spending an extra $120,000 to wrap his entire building in this brick. And that that would give you guys the confidence that I'm being a team player, that I'm really trying to fit in, that I'm really trying to come and be a part of this community in an honest way. And so the entire building is wrapped in the brick. Further? I gotta grab. We wrapped the monument sign in the brick. We wrapped the trash enclosure with the exact same brick. So when you look from Thornhill Road, excuse me, when you look from King's Highway, it's going to look like one continuous development from the church all the way over through the Dunkin' Donuts. So from Thornhill, or from Thornhill on this side, on the west side, to Line on the east side, it's going to look like one continuous campus because the church itself is actually wrapped all the way in that brick. And there's no break in it. There's no stucco, there's no wood. It's just all brick. So I thought that would give me the best chance to come to the planning commission and to say that I'm really putting my best foot forward because I know what happens after this, the next seven developments that I want to do. You guys will see me come here if I have to come here. And you'll be able to say, that young man has integrity. That young man has really tried to fit in. Hopefully he has humility and hopefully we've been able to meet the standard of what the historic district looks like. I brought this to you just so that you could see how different, how much change we've done. So Duncan has a new prototype. This is our new prototype. If you look at our, and actually, we don't have the peaked roof on there. But if you look at the color scheme of this, you can see the amount of change that we made to want to fit in to the community. And so wrapping this entire building in the same color brick allows us to meet that historic area's design aesthetic. The other concessions that we made, you can see on this landscape plan, from the actual trees chosen all the way down to the pedestrian access, we have an enhanced landscaping plan. No one has this much landscaping that's going. I've never done this on any of my stores. But we took the direction of the city planner to say, okay, let's pick the right landscaping that screened it from the road, that gave it the best chance to look like a seamless campus all the way across. We added significant pedestrian access, so we have a pedestrian access point here. We added in a pedestrian access point coming from the church. So when they come from the church, they can actually walk in and come across there. Interestingly enough, one of, I think the president of the historic district, she was at the neighborhood meeting. And the one comment she made is that there's a lot of trash that goes up and down King's Highway. And she wanted to make sure, she specifically asked for three trash cans to be on the exterior of the store. So I wanted to let her know that we've added all three of those trash cans so that she can see that. We also added the privacy screening fences that were requested by the church and by the local residents in the neighborhood. So those are some of the design features that we've added. We put all the specs in here so people can look at all those specs. I think another material consideration for us to discuss is the economic impact. So it'll cost me $2 million to buy this site, to build my store. So that obviously speaks to the property values that will be increasing by doing that. It's currently zoned residential, so those two homes, I think I'll buy those homes for somewhere, excuse me, for like $600,000 is what I'm paying for it. But with the development that's going to be on there, it'll be worth over a $2 million deal. So that'll allow all the properties there to increase in value that are there. And I would say at that corner, if you look at all the corners, all the way up and down King's Highway, they're all commercial on the corner. Even across the street on the other side of Thornhill, there is that commercial office space, or there are attorney's office there. They actually showed up at the neighborhood meeting and they were the ones that made the request on the monument signage that we kept it low for the visibility purposes. So we were able to achieve that as well.
Just to point, your 10 minutes are up.
Oh, good.
Let me do this, then steal. Board members?
I make a motion.
We have a motion to extend this time? You have a second? All those in favor, please vote yes. That motion was made by Mr. Curtis, second by Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, and I apologize. I don't need much more time. I think that what we've tried to do is address all the major issues that we heard in the neighborhood meeting. We've tried to address the issues that we've been able to coordinate with the city planners, staff, to understand what they thought was something that we could be in compliance and approval for that area. And I thank you guys so much for your time. Hopefully we have a chance for a rebuttal, but thank you so much. And my goal is to be a community partner. I want to be involved in nonprofit community organizations. A guy that I met here, Rodney White, he was telling me they have a code drive. We're going to join that code drive with him. We want to be partners, so if there's ways in which you guys can advise us to help, we're going to be here for, you know, the next 10, 20 years. And so thank you so much, and I really appreciate the time.
Mr. Dunn, before you leave, if you'll stay at the microphone, please.
Yes.
Board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Dunn before he takes his seat?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dunn, thank you for your presentation. You've made quite a few commitments to the city on this property. And I'm glad you're here to back them up. And I want to hear you say, again, you've already said it, that these are commitments that you're making to go through with this project, that they are binding on you.
Yes, these, every commitment is 100% binding. Going through the planned urban development process requires those to be binding. You guys obviously have the control over that. But every commitment that I made is binding and none of them will change. I give you my word.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I believe our cues are working, ladies and gentlemen. I have Mr. Joseph in the queue right now.
Good afternoon, Mr. Dunn.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for a very thorough and sincere presentation. I have one quick question. From our review of the staff report, it's indicated that they recommend a stipulation be placed on approval of this project. That is, the lighting and irrigation plans must be submitted to the executive director. And you're, I assume, okay with that?
Yes, sir, absolutely. We put so much landscaping in there. We definitely want to make sure.
You can get some irrigation done.
That's exactly right. But yes, I agree to that stipulation. And whatever lighting you guys want, we will provide. We have to have lighting. There's no reason for me to have anything different than what is recommended.
Thank you very much.
All right, I don't see anyone else's name in the queue. Do I hear anyone else? All right, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next time, I need to see a little bit more from Brad.
This particular time, is there anyone else present who cares to speak in favor of this project? If you do, please come forward. You have three minutes and please share your name and address when you get to the microphone. Anyone else care to speak in favor of this project? All right.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Levette Fuller, 519 Kirby Place. Just very briefly, Mr. Dunn has been incredibly accommodating through this entire process. He reached out to me very early on in the process to show me what original accommodations were being made from the suggestions from the church. He was already very cognizant that he was close to or adjacent to historic district. I also had requested the monument sign instead of the plow-in sign. And he was very quick to say that is very easy to do. And the only other thing that I requested that is in that plan is pedestrian access because you're so close to Bird High School. And I think that this is going to be a very busy place in the morning before school. And a lot of kids will be crashing on sugar in homeroom, but it'll be great. And I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Before you leave, are there any questions for Ms. Fuller, board members?
I have not heard any, I haven't heard any resistance from any of the neighbors. I wasn't able to make it to the neighborhood participation plan because we were here for a council meeting at the same time. But I heard very little resistance. I saw all the notes. And I have been monitoring this throughout. And Mr. Dunn has absolutely been accommodating to every request made by the neighbors. And I'm hoping that you'll also look at that traffic plan and see that it's something that does work for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else present who'd care to speak in favor of this project? Anyone else present who'd care to speak in favor? Hearing none, is there anyone present who'd care to speak in opposition to this project? In opposition to this project? Please come to the mic. State your name and address, please, sir.
I'm Donald Sweeters, 861 Columbia, Shreveport, Louisiana. I'm at the corner of Thornhill and Columbia. As you saw, the entry and exit of this project is onto Thornhill, a residential street. And I totally object to that. Why can't it have a King's Highway entry and exit? I hear of traffic studies, but I have not seen anything that particularly, other than the fact that I live there and I know that the poor little Thornhill Street can't take all of that. So again, I'm in opposition to this project because, as you can see, he still wants an entry and exit off of Thornhill, not off King's Highway. I don't care how many trees he plants. I don't care how many different colors brick he uses. I know he has eight more projects he's talking about developing here. But he doesn't need to use Thornhill for entry and exit. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Sweeters, board members? Hearing none, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who'd care to speak in opposition?
I do.
Please come forward. Give us your name and address, please, sir.
Phil Leteir. I live at 850 Rutherford, at the corner of Thornhill and Rutherford. And there's only one house between me and where they're going to be building the donut shop. But Thornhill has, around 3:00 every day, cars lined up for three blocks to pick up children. There's a lot of children from St. Mark's Cathedral School. And I'm against the entrance or exit going onto Thornhill. We have a lot of people that walk up and down Thornhill. We have a lot of people that walk their dogs up and down Thornhill. And I'm strongly against the exit or the entrance off of Thornhill. I'm not against the donut shop being built. I just don't want to see them put an entrance or exit onto Thornhill. I think that it would not be very good for the neighborhood.
All right, Mr. Leteir, any questions for Mr. Leteir, board members? Hearing none, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome. Anyone else present who'd care to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, my name's John Reeks. I'm the chancellor of St. Mark's Cathedral. I'm with law firm Bradley Murkison here in Shreveport. And we're at 401 Edward Street, Suite 1,000. We would oppose the current application as it is shown, primarily because of concern about the children at St. Mark's Episcopal Cathedral School. If we could put up, that other. As you can see, just to the northeast or northwest of the donut shop, all of that land that borders Fairfield and King's Highway is where the church is located. And our primary access for school pickup and drop-off runs along Thornhill right there and it comes into the back of the church. And like the gentleman before me said, you know, there's a line of cars there at 8:00 AM, 3:00 PM for pickup and drop-off. So St. Mark's, you know, believes that it's really a safety issue for the children that go to school at St. Mark's. And we would oppose the application as it is currently drawn.
Mr. Reeks, any questions, board members, or Mr. Reeks? Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who'd care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? All right, hearing none. The applicant does have the opportunity if you choose to come back for a rebuttal. If not, we'll go into deliberations. Thank you very much, sir. Come on forward. Please give us your name and address.
My name is Damon Dunn. My address is 13313 55th Avenue Northwest, Gig Harbor, Washington, 98332. So the reason I wanted to give rebuttal and the reason why we got the traffic study was because we thought there might be some concerns. But there is no additional traffic that's going to be on the road. So that's what the traffic study shows. We want to make sure we got beyond the anecdotal because I thought that someone might say, we're going to be bringing all this new traffic. It's going to be all backed up. And the only thing I could rebut that with would be just anecdotal information. No, we're not. Our traffic is not going to add more. But I think we've used science, we've used data, we used an accredited traffic engineering firm to measure the traffic, to do a full traffic engineering study and to demonstrate whatever their results are going to be. And what they've shown in those results is that we have no adverse impact. We're not adding any additional traffic that's already there. So there's no additional safety concern beyond the existing safety concern that's there today.
All right, Mr. Dunn, before you leave, board members, any comments or questions for Mr. Dunn?
Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Robertson, please.
Mr. Dunn, let me see if I understand what you're saying. You're stating that when the donut shop is completed... the donut shop is completed and in operation, there will be no additional traffic?
Yeah, go to, go to page four in the report. All the raw data is here. We feed off the existing traffic that is going along King Street and along Thornhill.
I'm looking at page four.
And in page four, you'll see in the, in the conclusion, it says, let me just get to page four here.
Okay, the word adverse is used in the report. You use the word additional. That's what confused me, because if you have no additional traffic, you're not going to have any customers unless they're all walking.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is that there's existing traffic on King's Highway and on Thornhill Road, and there is what's called destination retail, and then there's this called convenient retail. Destination retail is your grocery store, your Walmart, your Target, where people are being pulled in from a geographic region specifically to go to your location. And what they've designated our business as, the traffic engineering firm that we've had, is that we are a convenience business, meaning that people get their coffee on the way to work. They get their coffee on the way to dropping their kids off. So, the people that are driving along King's Highway and the people that are driving along Thornhill will be the people that will be servicing that Dunkin' Donuts, is what point I'm making, based upon, not my point, but based upon the traffic engineer that, based upon their report. So, the people that are already driving on King's Highway, the people that are already driving on Thornhill are going to come in and do that. And that makes intuitive sense as well, because you go to the dry cleaner that you drive by all the time. You get your prescription drugs from the drugstore you go to all the time, you drive by. And so, every morning, people who want coffee are going to pull in off King's Highway, according to the traffic report study, are going to use that, and they're going to go right back on to King's Highway and about their business. There is no additional pool traffic that's coming in from a different region of the city to increase the total amount of traffic that's already on King's Highway or on Thornhill Road.
Your report that you submitted, does it consider the St. Mark's traffic?
That's a good question. I don't know if it considers St. Mark's traffic. It considers all traffic on both King's Highway and Thornhill Road. So, if St. Mark's is actually on Thornhill Road or King's Highway, then yes, it considers 100% of the traffic of Thornhill Road and King's Highway. So, whatever entrances and exits that St. Mark's uses that are either on Thornhill or King's Highway, it considers 100% of that traffic for both their entrance and exit on those two roads.
I haven't read this report, so I'm taking your word for it. This is a firm out of Baton Rouge. They may not be familiar with St. Mark's Church and the flow of traffic to and from the school. So, is there a specific place in the report you can point to?
Well, I would say this.
We've considered St. Mark's and, and the nearby school traffic.
What I would say is this, is that you don't, it's the traffic that's on the road, right? So, if there's 35,000 cars, and it's on King's Highway, there's a certain amount of those cars that are going to King's Highway Church. There's a certain amount of those cars that are going down to the highway. There's a certain amount of those cars that are going to Brooks Chiara's Grocery Store. They consider 100% of the traffic that's there. They evaluate whether or not the use would bring more traffic that, to that location. And what they decided in the report, based upon their analysis, is that it would not bring any additional traffic that's already there. So, the traffic that is on King's Highway, the traffic that is on Thornhill Road, will be the same traffic before the donut shop is built, will be the same traffic after the donut shop is built. So, there's no more hazard based upon the number of cars that are passing there today. We could not build the Dunkin' Donuts, and you're going to have the exact same number of cars. And if we build it, the report tells you, we're going to have the exact same number of cars.
You may want to share a copy of this report with the gentleman from St. Mark's.
I will. I'll give him a copy.
Thank you for your answers.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Any more questions for Mr. Dunn?
And Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Clark.
Dr. Irland, who's the traffic engineer for the city of Shreveport, had planned to be here, but there were some situations that prevented him from being here. He had had conversations with our staff. If you have any unreadiness based on traffic concerns, because he had approved the traffic conditions and made the recommendations that there would no, be no real adverse results of this particular use being approved at this location. We can either wait until he can be here, which would be unfair to this applicant, or we can answer any questions, because we, we started and guided him to get involved in this situation because we knew that that was one of the concerns that was involved, and the staff would have never recommended approval for this application if there had been any hesitancy on the part of Dr. Irland. But we consider him the expert, and he is from Shreveport, and he is the traffic engineer for the city of Shreveport. So, he has a pretty good idea of the traffic and how it flows in the city of Shreveport.
All right, sir. Mr. Dunn, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Board members, at this particular time, you've heard the applicant, you've heard the questions and concerns from citizens. At this particular time, we will, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Valderris.
I do think that there may be a conflict with cars, carpool time for the school and for the business as well. I do think there may be a conflict. The car line for them, it's along Thornhill, and that's where his entrance and exit will be. So, I do think that there may be a conflict there. I don't know if the gentleman has been there early in the morning to look at the traffic, cars lined up along the, the street, and the in and out of his business. I think it will be a challenge. And I think as well as pickup time, at 3:00, regardless of what this traffic report may say. I do, I do have children that'll pick up a carpool, and cars lined up along the streets, and I know that that may be a conflict for, for the school parents and the, and the business as well.
All right, sir. Thank you. Comments, any more questions? Mr. Joseph?
My office and my house are in this, in this neighborhood. My office is just north of the, of St. Mark's on Fairfield, maybe in the 2100 block, and my house is close by as well. I frequent this particular area where Mr. Dunn is anticipating locating his business, and it, it just makes really good common sense to me that he put the business there, and, or he's desiring to put this business there in addition to the others that he wants to locate in the area, plus the precise reason that there's going to be the traffic coming by. This is, this is, you don't go out of your way, I mean, unless you're a Starbucks junkie. You don't go out of your way to go to the Starbucks. You go by, you go get your coffee in close proximity to where you're moving. In terms of the traffic, and I think the gentleman indicated himself, I don't know if he was trying to do this, but he indicated himself about the traffic that's a consequence of the carpool lane and whatnot on Fairfield because of St. Mark's. I have a difficult time myself getting to and from my office if I go around the, the drive time. It is a, and I'm a, anyone who knows me would tell you that I'm an education first person, so I'm definitely not against schools of any sort. I think we need more of those. But I just, I struggle to see how any of that makes any, 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 any impact on this proposal. I think the gentleman has gone above and beyond to, I mean, we've seen zillions of presentations before this body, and I cannot recall one being as thorough, being as sincere, was the word I used earlier, because that's what I meant. I think there was one that the councilwoman may disagree with, but there was a gentleman here a couple of weeks ago with the duplex issue, and I thought that was a very good presentation, and I'm not very easily impressed. But I'm impressed by this proposal, and I think that I, I've driven past and over those pieces of rubber on King's Highway for a couple of weeks as they would count that traffic. I think, unlike most people, we knew exactly what that was there for, and I've read this report, and I just don't see, there's been no issue that I've been presented today in opposition of this proposal that would cause me to have any concern. I'd be, I'm strongly in favor of this proposal.
All right. Mr. Morton?
I'm looking at a diagram of the plot here, and there is an entrance and exit on Thornhill, but there's also an entrance off of King's Highway. So, the, it sounded like they were alluding that the only entrance and exits were on Thornhill, but I see two sets of entrances. Yes, there's in and out on Thornhill and in and out on King's Highway. So, the buildup, if there is additional buildup, it would not necessarily be on, obviously not on King's Highway.
All right, sir, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion if we're at that point.
Motion to approve with the, with the stipulation regarding the lighting and the land, and the irrigation.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Joseph, including steps, second by Ms. Jackson. All those in favor? Please vote yes. Oppositions, no. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. That motion carries. This particular time, we'll move to item number seven, case number 21-13-SC, final plat major. I'm sorry, I didn't roll my screen. I apologize. We're at item number 10, case number 21204-C, temporary use permit. The applicant is Greenhead Gun Club LLC. If someone's here, please come forward. State your name and mailing address, please.
Good evening. My name is John James. My address is 2270 North Cross Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana. I have, I'm the owner of that property, and I have been collecting concrete there. You know, I, after I threw, working through the Corps of Engineers and delineating what was wetland, what was upland, I have a lot of wetland behind me in that area of the property that I own. And after delineating all that through the Corps of Engineers, we decided to start in the upland area, to start adding to that, to increase the value of the property, knowing that one day, we'd want to put a business there. But in that process, as we brought it all up, we started to take, instead of burying the concrete, contractors, we were in a very good location for contractors, loved to, to bring us their field from construction jobs around the north side of town. So, as we started filling that area up, we started separating. One of the contractors said, man, you need, you need to start stockpiling your concrete instead of burying it, because you could have that crushed, and, you know, it'd be valuable whenever you get ready to cover your property, whenever you're done filling it up to Hillary Huckabee levels. And so, that's what we did. That's what I did. I started stockpiling it. And then a, a year and a half, two years ago, whenever we started the process, when we got to a point, we said, hey, it's, it's time to start the concrete crushing. At that point, I had no idea we were needing to do a permit at that time. So, I have learned a lot. I've got a, a good MPC education that is still going to take me forward to many times. I imagine I'll be here in front of y'all. So, so the, I'm here today. This is a, we put this applicant together. Ms. Correa and, and the staff has been very helpful in, in steering me in the right direction. Mr. Bradford, Will Bradford, was the attorney that was going to be here to help present this case, but he had a positive test two days ago. So, you're stuck with me. I am pretty well versed on it. I think I can answer any of the questions. We've had our neighborhood participation program meeting. We've talked, you know, to my knowledge, at this point, we don't have any opposition. The staff has come with me. We've had some challenges on that property in the past. I have met all those challenges, and I think the staff, I mean, I think, think I'm in a good position with the staff. I know they recommended approval for me on certain constitutions, conditions, but those conditions have all been met, and we, even today, there is, in the meeting, there, in our plan, we had a couple of adjustments. The dust mitigation for a rock crushing, you know, we want to make sure that we're not doing anything. We're in a rural area, and we're not, we don't have any businesses anywhere around us, but the dust mitigation plan that we had put forth had said, we won't operate on windy conditions. Well, that, that, you know, we went back to the environmental company, and they recommended, don't crush in 30 mile per, sustained 30 mile per hour winds. Well, I said, well, that 25 miles per hour sounds pretty bad to me, so we bumped it down to 25. Anytime we have sustained winds of 25 miles per hour or more, we will stop crushing, make sure there's no crushing going on. This is a temporary permit. I do not want to be in the rock crushing business. I want to crush the rock on this location, and then we want to move forward in finishing the property, covering the property, and making it valuable, whether we do, whether I'll be coming back to rezone, what it's going to be rezoned for, I'm not really sure yet. I have some fabulous ideas, but I'm also entertaining ideas. So, that's a, I think that just as a, as a synopsis of what I, what my plans are, I will be glad to entertain any questions that you have.
Well, Mr. James, we've, we've got a couple of questions. I know we heard a couple yesterday, and I, and I know you're capable of answering them, and I'm going to say to you what I said to you the last time you stood at that mic. We're excited to see you and to have a business in this area that's boosting the income for the community. At this particular time, I'm looking for names in the queue for questions. I don't see Mr. Robinson's name in the queue.
I do have questions.
That's what I thought. Mr. Robinson?
Getting a bad reputation up here.
No, no, no.
Mr. James, right?
No, no, no. We've got this little device over here, and I'm looking to see if your name's on it. You got to push that button in front of it.
I got you.
All right, go right ahead. You got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. James. You referenced the expiration on the permit. I would imagine rock crushing equipment's pretty expensive. You're going to probably lease it, correct?
Well, I have a Southern disposal in Bowser City. This gentleman right here, he owns Southern Disposal. He'll be coming in, crushing, crushing the concrete on my property.
So, after a year, you expect to get out of the business?
And about, he estimates probably about, it'll take us about four, about four months to do the crushing, but we did the year, so we'll have time, weather permitting. I don't want to come back to you later on and ask for permission again. I will, I figure one year's time, I said, one year's time, it's got to be gone. So, that's, that's what my end time, end goal is.
Thank you.
It is a great location for crushing, for, for bringing in, in rock, but again, I'm retired, and I don't want, I'm done. Don't want anymore.
Thank you.
All right, I see. Mr. Valderris?
I'm good.
You're good.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. Did I see anybody else's? Couple of things I wanted to ask you to expound on, sir. One was, I believe when you were here before, you indicated either officially or unofficially that you own, you had invested in some 200 acres, possibly in that area.
I own 300 acres.
I'm sorry. I stand corrected. 300 acres. The second question is, if you were standing in the middle of, of Hillary Huckabee Drive, and you were looking south, you would be looking at Cross Lake, is that correct?
That is correct. Actually, I'd be looking at those railroad tracks up there, but on the other side of that.
That's what I wanted you to say. That's where I'm going with this. If you would share with the board members, for those who haven't driven by, and I found it hard that nobody hadn't, the level of the lake and the train trestles versus the level of your property across Hillary Huckabee. Difference?
Yes, sir, it is. I, I mean, my goal is, I own the property. I bought the property back in 98, 1998, 1999, when the value of property was, nobody wanted to own property, and just had a vision, you know, God has been really good to me. And so, I just felt like that that was something that I needed to do, was to purchase that property. And, and in the time, so I'm saying that, eight years ago, when we had historic floods, and the properties, and the flooding, the, the flooding comes that, that we received in, in the MLK area comes from the Red River. When the Red River comes down from Texas, Arkansas, the lakes up there, when it comes down, it backfloods into 12 Mile Bio. 12 Mile Bio backfloods into the MLK area. So, the flooding that we received in there, eight years, we've been, you know, I mean, I've been flooded in there probably five times in the last 10 years, and before that, it was never flooded. So, since then, I thank the Lord, in the last three or four years, we haven't had any major flooding in there. But the water, when it backfloods, it, it, we don't get flooding from Cross Lake, is what I'm saying. We get flooding from the Red River. People get a little bit, they think when the, when the Cross Lake is flooding, that we get flooding. That's really not the case. It's the Red River that is flooding into 12 Mile Bio. And again, I'm an expert when it comes to flooding the MLK. I know exactly where that water's coming from. So, my goal on my upland area, what your original question was, the, the, the height, what I've done is, I've just marked all those levels back when we got 36 and a half foot flood stage eight years ago. I know exactly where those are, because on musty days, you can see it in my tree lines through my property. And so, what I'm trying to do is, I'm never going to be able to build my road back around my property up to that kind of levels. That, that's just inconceivable, and, and it just wouldn't happen. But up there in the front... But up there in the front, that front four or five acres that I'm working on, what I'm shooting off of is being close to the Hillary Huckabee level, within about a foot or so of Hillary Huckabee. And we know even during the floods of those times, when the river got to thirty-six and a half foot flood stage, it didn't cross Hillary Huckabee, it crossed Russell Road, where my property butts up against Russell Road, you know, it got impassable on Russell Road, which that needs to be rebuilt and raised up for the community. But it has not, I'm just, you know, I'm trying to stay right there on the Hillary Huckabee. Because I don't want to, I'm not going to build originally, eventually put a business there that's going to be subject to flooding. If it floods Hillary Huckabee, that means all of downtown is going to be flooded. And the city's not going, not going to put up with that. And so, you know, I'm going off what I know that the city, what the city can do and what the city can't do. And so at some point, the city's got to either redredge or the state's got to redredge the Red River that used to be like this right here, that is now like this right here. And so therein lies our problem, is when you've got that much water coming through this, it goes out of its banks where it used to be this wide. So that, but that's a city problem, a parish, a state, federal problem. You know, that's way above my pay grade, so.
I really appreciate your DQ presentation. But we thank you very much. I guess one of the things I wanted to make sure that our board members understood, that the level of your property and the level of Hillary Huckabee is your goal. But once you cross that, there's quite a bit of difference between the level of that railroad train trestle.
Yeah, the railroad tracks and the levee that runs along through there between me and Cross Lake is way higher than Hillary Huckabee and higher, even going to be higher than me.
Well, thank you very much. Any more questions for Mr. Robinson? I'm sorry, Mr. James.
I got you on my mind, Mr. Robinson. I will say, Mr. Chair, I may.
Mr. Clark?
Mr. James did allude to the fact that he did have some issues, and he did have some issues. But we sort of met back during the time that he had the crawfish stand that he was placing on his property. He has immediately dealt with any issues that have come up. Because he has, and the neighborhood, the MLK neighborhood, that's the thing that nobody takes into consideration. But during the summer months, he had quite a few ladies out on his property that he was explaining to about what his plans were for that property. And I got a call from the Neighborhood Association or the Business Association up in MLK that met with him at his last Neighborhood Participation Plan meeting. And they are all very supportive of what he's doing. So that's highly unusual, but they are very supportive of what he's doing. He took out the time to sit down and do like he did with you. He gives dramatic presentations, but took out the time to share with them everything that he was doing, how he was going to do it, how it would impact the University Terrace Neighborhood, which is quite a distance away. But, and, you know, that's part of what we try to accomplish in Neighborhood Participation Plan programs, is to allow residents that would be directly impacted by these developments to know exactly what's being proposed and to have a relationship with the person that's proposing these things. So if anything goes south, they know who each other are and they can continue to communicate. I just wanted to share that with you. This was one of my success stories in the idea of the Neighborhood Participation Plan meetings.
Along with that, it's good to say, reminder that City Councilwoman Ms. Taylor, my City Councilwoman, is aware and I have been in contact with her and she is in favor. She does not, she's not in any kind of a, you know, she's in, hoping for approval also.
She's not in opposition.
She's in support. Also, Commissioner Johnson, he lives out in that side of town too, and he's aware of this also. And I've been in contact with him. So I haven't received anybody that's given me any conflict.
And both have been in attendance of these Neighborhood Participation Plan meetings. That was one of the occasions where both the parish commission there and the city council person were both in attendance to gain information and ideas from this applicant. So he covered all his bases. I'm very happy about what he's done.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
All right, board members, any more questions for Mr. James? Sir, thank you very much. Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, hearing none, is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Hearing none, board, any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. What steps?
Motion by Mr. Curtis Joseph to approve with steps. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Robertson. All those in favor, please vote yes, oppositions no. That motion carries. At this particular time, we're at item number eleven, case twenty-one dash two oh seven dash C. This is an appeal. The applicant who is appealing the decision of the executive director is represented by Hader Reynolds Attorneys. Please come forward, sir. State your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. I'm John Hader with the law firm Hader Reynolds. I represent the Norris Ferry Landing Homeowners Association.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good to see you, John. We're here today on an appeal. Just to give you a quick background, the matter went before the city council for the approval of the Brookshire site. There was a site plan that went through, preliminary site plan. Then the final site plan apparently was submitted, but it was submitted under a different number than the original number that had been involved with the Brookshire zoning. Fortunately, I stumbled across it literally two or three days before the thirty-day period for filing an appeal ran. The site plan itself has three different dates on it. We chose the earliest date to file this appeal, simply to bring this matter up because everybody, nobody knew that a final site plan had even been presented or asked to be approved. In the interim, we've now discovered, as I've shown to each of y'all in the documents, hopefully you've received that we submitted to the MPC yesterday, is that the entrance road to this property and the site plan that you see up there is incorrect. Simply incorrect. We show as an attachment to an Exhibit A that when the servitude of passage was obtained from the Cattle Parish School Board for the very northern entrance, what they call the main entrance, the Cattle Parish School Board reserved, and I apologize because I get tongue-tied on this, they reserved allowed drive approach connection locations. That was the term used in the agreement. Now, the agreement itself has an attached Exhibit A that doesn't even show those locations. We were able to pull up the locations from another agreement with another exhibit. And if I can ask, the one I have for y'all is blown up, but I'll let you look at this one. Show you what we're talking about. If you see on the road on the very right side, on the east side, in this area right here, you're going to see two hash mark lanes. What has happened is the Cattle Parish School Board has reserved the right to attach two roads to this road. So that their school that they have, the twenty acres north of their school, if they ever build it, will have an access point. Or if a commercial development goes in because the school board chooses not to build the property there, they're not going to hang on to it, they're going to sell it. So we're going to have a commercial development. They will have those rights to tie into that road. The importance of that is that suddenly we have a road that is not just servicing Brookshires, Brookshires gas station or two out parcels. We have a road that's serving another twenty acres of land. Now, why is that significant? We've shown you, we, the Neighborhood Association hired their own traffic expert. This is Traffic Expert Day, apparently. But we hired our own traffic expert, who had been the traffic engineer for the city of Lafayette in the past. He looked at the numbers and he said, "John, you've got three thousand cars going up and down that road during the morning hours and another three thousand going up and down the road at night." So you've got six thousand cars, six to seven thousand cars going up and down this road. He said, "Not only that, let's look at the time that you have to come out of the subdivision that you represent to make a turn." Said, "The standard time to make a turn that you need is six to six point five seconds to make a left turn." You think about it, it takes a few seconds to get there. Based on the traffic flow during the peak hour, you got less than five seconds. So we got people trying to get out. We got a problem here and we need to get it solved. So we can't, we're going to prove, if you approve this site plan, we're approving it without knowing what the traffic impact's going to be. There's a lot of problems out there, we got a whole lot of traffic. Brookshires spent a bunch of money hiring a traffic study. They're looking at having to widen a road. I'm not sure that's the right answer. You know, should we take this main entrance? There's a lot of issues that need to be addressed. For you today, the issue is the appeal. It's simply saying, this site plan is not correct. The appeal is valid. Send it back to the MPC. The MPC then turns around and submits the site plan back to you and we can address all of these traffic issues. That's what we're here today for, to stop this from going forward. Let's stop and let's look at what is the impact of that. Because that was not presented to you when you first heard this case. Because the right of way wasn't even obtained until September. But there was no, it was not put on the MPC plat. I don't believe there was anything nefarious. I think it's simply, they didn't know. But now I have an access point, two access points, that can flood into Norris Ferry directly across from my client's subdivision. And there's several hundred houses in there, tremendous amount of traffic. The traffic study that was done by Brookshires shows the number of people that are going in and out of there all day long. And it's a considerable amount of people coming out of there. Most of the time, and the heaviest time was seven o'clock in the morning when everybody's taking their kids to school. So I got people in cars with kids in there going to school on a road that's got way too much traffic on it, as it speaks. And then we look at the Brookshires itself, what did it do? Their traffic expert tried to say that, "Oh, it's not going to generate any new, what we call pass-by traffic." In other words, people are just going to stop on their way home and go in there. There's not going to be many people that go home, sit down in their chair and go, "Oh, I need milk, get up and go back." That's what he claimed. My traffic expert looked at it and he came up with almost fifty percent more people than their traffic expert said are going to go to this location. That's just more traffic, more people, and we got a traffic issue now. What are we going to do? These people are going to have the legal right to use this entrance, if they own the property, to the north. We can't have that happen. So this matter needs to stop, go back. Let's look at this, let's see if there's a solution and try to make it so it's safe for everybody. Because safety is the key. It's not the convenience of a grocery store, it's the safety of the people around it. I'll entertain any questions.
Ladies and gentlemen, are there any questions for Mr. Hader? Mr. Clark? If I say, all right. Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this applicant's request?
Good afternoon. I'm James Parkerson. I am the Norris Ferry Landing Homeowners Association President. So I'm here representing our two-hundred-and-ninety-one homes in that neighborhood and their families. We've had our own discussions about this development and I wanted to make sure that you guys understood what we are after here. And I know Mr. Hader has made a great presentation on our behalf on the technical side of it. But I just want to make sure, the people of our neighborhood, this is not about whether we want Brookshires here or that we dislike Brookshires in any way. This is not anything to that. To be honest with you, I frequent Brookshires a lot and I prefer them over some of the other places in town. So it has nothing to do with that. Our concern has always been, and we've actually been here present with the MPC and city council with other developments in the neighborhood for the same issue, and that is a safety issue on Norris Ferry. Our kids come out to get on the bus, we try to get in and out of that neighborhood. We have wrecks all the time right there in our entrance because of the traffic that's already there and already congested. And then we have a development across the street, it wouldn't matter who it was, trying to add to that already existing problem. And so just want to make it clear that that is our concern and it's a legitimate concern. We've had other things happening in that area where we had to have even Shreveport Police out directing traffic. And officer had to dive into our landscaping to avoid being hit because of the traffic situation there. We've had numerous wrecks where our fence has to be fixed because of traffic issues on Norris Ferry. So I just want to present that from our standpoint. We're hoping that we can have a way forward to mitigate some of those safety issues. And we look forward to discussing those. But in its current form, as Mr. Hader said, we just believe that that is just going to add to our safety concerns for our neighborhood. Thank you, and I'll take any questions if you have one.
Any questions for Mr. Parkerson? Hearing none, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else present who care to speak in opposition to this request to appeal this decision on part of the executive director? Anyone else present who care to make any comments in favor? Hearing none, is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this appeal?
Good afternoon, members of the commission. You mind if I take this off?
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
I know a lot of people have been talking with theirs on, but I've kind of gotten used to not wearing mine, so. My name is Jeff Westmoreland. I'm with Wiener Weisen Madison. Address is three-thirty Marshall Street, Suite one thousand, Shreveport, seven eleven oh one. I'm here representing my clients, Brookshire Grocery Company and Aramco Inc. They are the owners of the subject property and the developers of this property. Let me speak first to what Mr. Hader just mentioned. He placed on the overhead projector an exhibit to a private agreement of easements, conditions and restrictions between Brookshires and Aramco on how all the driveways would be built, how all this would be built. And on that exhibit, there is, there are the arrows he showed you here on that exhibit, okay? That is a private agreement that has no bearing on an approved site plan. This is your site plan, this is our site plan. That private agreement cannot change the site plan. We are bound to build in accordance with this site plan, which means, as you see, this has to be squared off. I also like to show you another page of the approved site plan that shows this a little bit. It shows landscaping here, and again, it's squared off. That private agreement has no bearing on an approved site plan. The site plan is the site plan, we must build in accordance with it. The Cattle Parish School Board is bound by this site plan. If they want to add to the end of that servitude, that is a separate application, a separate process, a separate investigation by the MPC, probably another traffic study. So what they're objecting to is something outside of the approved site plan on some proposed construction that may or may never happen. Cattle Parish School Board has owned that track for about twenty years. They know that development is going to build up out there and they're going to hold it until they get the best use that they can get out of it, whether that's a school or another development. That also realized that this won't be, Cattle Parish is only access. Accesses can be put along Norris Ferry going north. So I think that that is a, an attempt to point out maybe an inconsistency, but it doesn't change the site plan. I'd also point out that this subdivision has had the opportunity to be heard multiple times. There was a neighborhood planning, partition meeting, which they were, a lot of folks were in attendance. Traffic study came out of that meeting because the discussion on traffic. But also reminded that this body approved the preliminary site plan on May fifth, twenty-twenty-one. Nobody spoke in opposition to that site plan. That was a noticed public hearing because it was a zoning change. It was a putt approval and it was a site plan. That was noticed, the neighbors were provided notice. That was noticed, the neighbors were provided notice. No one, no one showed up, spoke in opposition. And that's in the record, it's in the staff report. The City Council then approved the PUD and the site plan on June 8th. The record shows no one spoke in opposition. So here we are, after getting final site plan approval, we're ready to break ground, we're ready to start work out there, and appeal comes. And then they hire a traffic engineer that's not here, that we don't get to talk to, that you don't get to talk to, to call into question a traffic study performed by Brookshires. Now, I'll remind you, and the staff report reminds you, that that traffic study was done, Dr. Erlin has reviewed it, Dr. Erlin has approved it. He was going to be here today, but was not able to be here today. But, all of those issues, the, we need to look at the traffic issues. They've all been looked at, and they've all been handled up until this point. And they've been handled at multiple occasions. Your first preliminary site plan approval, the City Council approval. Those were opportunities for folks to appear, for them to hire any experts they wanted to hire. I'll also tell you why their requested relief is not a good idea. They want to get rid of this entire entrance and have all the traffic come through Southern Loop Circle. Southern Loop Circle is a fairly narrow road, and there are no plans right now to widen it, and it is a city street. If you get rid of this, all the traffic for Brookshires and then possibly some other businesses are gonna go through Southern Loop Circle. You're gonna create an incredible, this is where Southern Loop and Norris Ferry, where the light is. You're gonna create an incredible traffic problem there. People who are coming northbound on Norris Ferry, who wanna turn left on Southern Loop, who don't even plan to visit the project, are gonna be caught up in that because you've got one small entrance for all of that. This servitude has been on the site plan since the first time it was applied for. And again, so it's, it's no secret, it's no surprise to anybody. It's been in the public record since the first day. Now, as we indicated in our, in our submission, you know, if you know Brookshires Grocery Company, you know that they're a first-class operation. You know this is going to be a first-class project. And in fact, in speaking with my clients, they said this is gonna be the nicest store they've ever built. And so in order to get this PUD designation, on the second page of my submittal, I set forth all of these extra things that they're willing to do as a good neighbor, to try to make this aesthetically pleasing. They try to keep as many natural trees as possible, which was a request of the neighbors. They've done all of those things to try to make this a great project. I also wanna point out, and you can look at, it's in my submittal, but we'd also submit that the appeal is untimely. Article 16.9G of the UDC says that when, when a city council is involved in approving a zoning and a site plan, which is what happened here, that the appeal runs from the decision of the city council, okay? The appeal doesn't run from the decision of the Executive Director because the statute says that once the preliminary site plan has been approved, that the Executive Director will approve it as long as it's in accord with the preliminary site plan. I go back to the point, this site plan has never changed. The fact that some arrows were drawn on an agreement between Brookshires and Aramco doesn't change the site plan. Doesn't change our ability to build in accordance with the site plan. If, if their concerns happen in the future, that will be addressed at another hearing. And another traffic study perhaps. And maybe then, the discussion will be, okay, well, only a certain amount of traffic can come through here, but you may need another entrance here, or you may need another entrance further north. But I don't think you can hold up this site plan based on something that might happen in the future, and based on some document that is not controlling on the site plan as approved by this body, by the City Council, and by the Executive Director. One of the other discussions in their initial appeal was to eliminate the widening of the property in the turning lanes. And I know Mr. Hader didn't address that, but it's in the paperwork. If you've been by this area, you know that's a terrible idea. It's a two-lane road, except, except where they've added a turning lane. They're close to the light. But they're, you know, again, Brookshires and Aramco are talking about spending, we know how expensive it is to widen both sides of that intersection. And they're talking about spending that money to, to do that and make it safer. And that was addressed in the traffic study. So while, and then lastly, Dr. Erlin says, and, and the staff report quotes it, that the safest thing for this entrance is to be across from the Norris Ferry entrance, not to offset them in any way. That the safest thing is to have them across because it lessens the amount of obstacles that a, that a car has to endure when it comes to that intersection. Lastly, I just wanna reiterate that, you know, Brookshires and Aramco, you know, they're part of this community, they've been a part of this community for a long time, and they wanna now be a part of the Southern Loop Norris Ferry Road community. And have gone above and beyond, will go above and beyond, and continue to do so. But, the simple fact is, this site plan has been, been unchanged since the day it was filed or approved, and it, it remains unchanged. And we're subject to it. And so it's final, and we ask that the appeal be disregarded. And we ask that, that you move and vote to approve the site plan, the final site plan as approved by the Executive Director.
All right, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Westmoreland. Board members, do either one of you have questions for this gentleman? All right, Mr. Robertson.
Do you see my button?
No, it's not in the queue. It's not up there.
It's not? It's on my board here.
Please go right ahead.
Well, let's hope it works when it comes time to vote.
There you go.
You might not want that, Mr. Westmoreland. Careful what you ask for.
I know.
I appreciate your, your presentation. I'm a little confused. Brookshires wants two entrances off of Norris Ferry Road?
Correct, per the site plan.
And the council has agreed to that?
Correct. And so has this body, in the approval of the preliminary site plan.
Was I, was I here at that time?
May 5th, 2021.
I don't think I was here. I'm just wondering, I'm a fairly new member, so.
Understand.
I don't remember this case.
Understand.
I'm looking at the same diagram that's displayed up on the board with the swept paths only title at the top. This, this white space in the lower left-hand corner, I think that's what builders call an out parcel?
Correct.
That's controlled now by Brookshires and Aramco?
It's controlled by Aramco. Aramco retained this parcel, this parcel, and a parcel back here.
For future development.
Actually here too, but that's just parking.
And, and that's envisioned for future development, correct?
Correct.
Now, this parcel on the lower left, is it gonna need an access on Norris Ferry?
No. The only accesses we have for the site plan, and that's, those parcels are included in the site plan, are the, the two accesses we have. If you'll see, if you'll see, Mr. Robertson, you'll come in here, and there's an access here, and that will bring them in to here. And they can go here, or they'll go down to here and come into here.
And it's Brookshires' position that they need two accesses on Norris Ferry Road?
Absolutely.
And that's because of the inadequacy of Southern Loop Circle?
Well, I think that's, that's part of it. The other issue that I neglected to, to tell you, and I'm glad you're, you're bringing this up, all of our truck and delivery traffic, not all, almost all, will be directed to come through Southern Loop because it'll go here, down this drive, and into the back. So truck traffic will, will not be predominantly coming here. On occasion, the fuel trucks may come in here to fuel, but they also can come down here. And Brookshires is very good about, about their servicers and their truckers to tell them where they need to be and where they need to go. This is, this is, and it shows on the, on the sweep plan, it shows the traffic coming in here, looping, coming in here, looping. So, again, truck traffic, delivery traffic will come through here. But yes, if you can imagine, I mean, this is, this is, this is at best a two-lane road here, Southern Loop Circle. And if you can imagine trying to put all of that traffic through that one, and, and I believe, you know, and I'm not here to speak for Dr. Erlin, but he's looked at it, and he's looked at the traffic impact study that was obtained, and, you know, there's a reason for having the two entrances for a project that, that, you know, may have this many people.
The, the store footprint is at the rear of the property, correct?
Excuse me?
The store, the store itself, the footprint of the store is the rear of the property?
Correct, it's right here. So this is all parking, fuel island, out parcels, parking here. Retention pond for drainage back here.
I'm kinda leery, Mr. Westmoreland, you might have sensed that. It seems to me that if Brookshires wanted to do something community-minded, they would try the Southern Loop access, and if it was inadequate, come back to the city and say, we need a second access.
I mean, I, I.
Once, once you build the second access, it's done. But when you get started, you go with one. If you, if it proves inadequate, you go with a second one.
Well, I can see that position. I kinda quote the young man from Dunkin' Donuts, you never get a second chance to make a first impression. If, if you clog up traffic with one, and people, and we know how people are, they get fickle. I tried to get over there, it was hard to get in, I'm never going back. First, Brookshires does a first-class operation. When we open, we want it to be as, as good as it can be. Traffic impact study was done, Dr. Erlin's looked at it. You know, I regret that, that you don't have the other expert here. The other expert didn't come to the other hearings. And, between the engineers and the traffic study, the engineers for Brookshires, engineers for the city, they believe that this is how you make the project flow properly. And so, while I can see your point, I think that if you start with something that you hope is gonna work, and it doesn't, you've, you've put a negative impact on the business and the project. And so, given this scenario, I think most of the experts believe this will work. Or they do, or that's why we're here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions from, is there a question from any other board members? Well, Mr. Westmoreland, thank you very much. Is there anyone else present who'd care to speak in opposition to this application?
Yes, sir.
All right, sir.
Good afternoon to members of the MPC. My name is Jason Cooper, I'm with Brookshire Grocery Company. My address is 1600 West Southwest Loop, 323 Tyler, Texas. Certainly want to reinforce some of the positions that Mr. Westmoreland shared. Heard a lot of concern about the, the drives and the traffic. Certainly, I, I wanna address the last issue that was, that was brought up with respect to, to the need for a drive along Norris Ferry. Based on the traffic counts we're anticipating, you know, the customer counts for their stores, we need that ingress egress, that relief route on the north and south Norris Ferry Road, as well as the one that's on Southern Loop. In addition to that, if you look at the, where the placement of the fuel center is, for purposes of convenience to the customers, you want your access drive to be as close to the fuel station as possible. You don't want them to have to go out of their way in order to try to access that and exit, and essentially taking the same route as the fuel truck. Shreveport's very important to us, it's very important to our company. We've had a long history in Shreveport, we've had a number of stores for, for a number of years. This is a big project for us. We've looked at this site for well over 10 years, and we've watched it develop. We've had interest in coming here for a long time. We had a neighborhood participation meeting back in, I think it was in the, in the spring or the summer, where we had the opportunity to, to share this, 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 this project with the community. This is a really exciting project for us. This is a brand-new prototype. Our company hasn't built a new store, a new Brookshire store, nearly 10 years. Shreveport's getting the very first, the very best Brookshire store we've ever built. Really excited about that. We've incorporated a lot of things into the store that a lot of our typical Brookshire stores don't have in Shreveport. And so, we're excited to bring those, those things to the community. We took a lot of the comments from the, the members of the community, particularly things regarding landscaping, the design of the store. And we also took into account some concerns that were raised by the neighborhood, Norris Ferry neighborhood, with respect to just the, the traffic impact. In response to that, we commissioned at our cost a traffic impact study to be able to determine, one, our, you know, our needs for traffic, but also the impact to, to the intersection. Based on the, the results of that traffic impact study, you see the final design that was recommended, and that's the design we move forward with. Some of the comments, you know, with respect to eliminating that drive, again, you know, certainly the convenience of the fuel center. But as mentioned by Mr. Westmoreland, currently today, Southern Loop, at least that section of Southern Loop is very narrow. To drive all of that traffic to that narrow road, in addition to all of our delivery vehicles, is certainly gonna create quite a bit of congestion. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
It's quite all right. Mr. Cooper, your three minutes are up, is there any final comment you'd care to make?
No, sir. I sure appreciate everybody's time. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have with respect to this project.
Before you leave the mic, are there any questions for Mr. Cooper?
One question.
Mr. Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Yes, sir.
The fuel center is gonna be in that looped area at the top?
That's correct. That, the loop is actually the, the route of the, the fueling truck.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair? All right, Mr. Cooper, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else present who'd care to speak?
Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Clark?
I, I think we've gotten totally off of the concept of what we're doing here. This is an appeal of the signing of the final site plan. We have gone back through totally reintroducing the, the application, which was covered during the preliminary site plan review. Just from my perspective, I'm, I had asked Stephen a week ago to, to form a, a basis of exactly what was happening at this particular hearing because I knew this was gonna happen, and we were gonna get on other subjects other than what was before you. So I'm gonna ask him to outline to you exactly what was appealed, and what you will be making a decision about today.
Stephen, thank you.
So, what's in front of you is an appeal of Mr. Clark's decision to approve the final site plan. What the, what the appellant would like you to do, be able to overturn his decision and put this back in front of this body to reconsider this preliminary site plan. But today, we are not here to reconsider the preliminary site plan. What we're here to do is decide whether or not that there's good grounds to state that Mr. Clark should not have approved this final site plan. And so, that's what our language, all the, the language that we put in our staff report was intended to convey. And it is, if, if it is the desire of this board to overturn that decision, then that would be the time for it to come back and discuss it in detail. But the first thing you've gotta do is decide whether or not the, the, that Mr. Clark's approval, whether the appeal should stand on that or not. I'll be glad to answer any questions if, if I did not make myself clear.
That's murdered. All right, sir, Mr. Dean. Any other questions or comments? All right. At this particular time, rebuttal, please.
We have one more speaker.
My name is Chase Hoffpower, I represent Aramco, 11016 Norris Ferry Road. I really don't have anything to add, other than this developer has been developing this South Shreveport for the last 30, 40 years now, and would never do anything to, you know, to diminish the area, always wanna add to it. My family, my kids drive, my friends, they're, it's our community we're building this, this area for. And we don't, it's not our intent to jeopardize anybody's safety. This is good planning, this is sound planning, done by experts, and we like, we like it. We're happy with it, thank you.
All right, sir, thank you very much. All right, sir, thank you very much. All right, is there any rebuttal at all?
I understood what he said, and he's right.
Give us your name and address.
I'm sorry, John Hader, Hader Reynolds Attorney, six-eleven, Abbotson Court, Suite C, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven-eleven fifteen. And rebuttal, I agree with Mr. Dean, he said it exactly right. We've got to look at, is this site plan, should it have been approved? No disparagement to Mr. Clark, he didn't know about the servitude of passage. But from day one, the original report that came out of the MPC told Brookshires, "You gotta go get a servitude of passage from the school board to get to Norris Ferry." Fine. They waited until September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, I'll put that up for y'all to look at. That is the recorded servitude of passage between Ramco and the Catopirish School Board. It is in September. That is after, you've heard the information, that is after the city council approved all of this and looked at it. They hadn't even gotten the servitude of passage done until September. Everything's done, and now we're coming back. So what's significant about this? Will, I'm gonna read to you, from the agreement, it states, under section three restrictions, section E says, "Limited access. No curb cuts permitting access to any portion of the Catopirish School Board track, other than that portion within the servitude shall be allowed on the roadway constructed in the servitude, except within the areas shown as allowed drive, approach, connection locations on the attached Exhibit A." That's Exhibit A. Do you see on there any allowed controlled drive approach locations shown up on that servitude of passage? No, they're not. We don't know where they are. We've got an agreement that says they exist, you've got copies of it, I included it into my submission to you. We don't know where it exists. The only thing I found was what I showed you was on another agreement, but on that other agreement that they say doesn't apply to this, and he's right, it's a private agreement. But guess what, on their Exhibit A, it says, "Allowed controlled drive approach locations", which is exactly what we're talking about. And it shows it up in the east end of this property. All we're saying is, send this back and let's figure out what's going on here. He gives time to Brookshires, they can go to the school board and say, "Hey, guys, this is screwing up our deal, you know, take this out. We can't give you load, we can't give you access, because now, y'all use this road, then we've really created traffic." Gives us time to look at the fact of, can we do a right-in, right-out on this road? What they call a pork chop, to stop some of the traffic flow, so we don't need all this traffic flow, so it's in and out for some of the people to use, other people've gotta use something else. That's all we're trying to do at this point. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hader, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Hader?
I got you.
Mr. Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. Hader. Are you saying that when this matter came up before the MPC last year, and went to the city council subsequently, there was one entrance and exit approved for Brookshires?
No, sir, there may have been two, but there was no legal right to use that northern entrance until they got a servitude of passage from the school board. You can't go drive all over the school board's property and put a road on it without their permission.
So the developers asserted two, two entrances onto Norris Ferry, even though they only had the right to one?
Up until September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. They did not get the servitude of passage recorded until that date.
And that was after the council approved this?
Yes, sir. It's dated September twenty-first by the school board, and the twenty-second by Ramco. And Brookshires signed it on the twenty-first of September.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have the opportunity to-
I'm sorry, he's not allowed to, thank you.
You'll need to talk to the staff if you need to make any further comments. Any questions for Mr. Hader, any further questions? Thank you very much, sir. All right, Mr. Moore? Okay, all right.
Just one more, one more thing, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, because I've got a board member or two said they're totally confused on-
Yes, I wanna, I wanna be able to speak to that question.
Because we, we had this discussion earlier this morning, because I had the same concerns, and we have finally gotten it resolved, and I'm gonna let Stephen explain it to you.
Okay, so, so from the beginning, the first plans that we were ever shown had the connection that you see there, that's north of the site, that's through the school board property, was in the very first literations of the site plan, including the access through the Southern Loop extension. What staff had made sure is to put as a part of the stipulation of the approval was to obtain the actual servitude of passage, it was actually a, a condition of the approval that was granted both by the MPC and by the city council. So they were just acting on what was required for them to do.
So is that a sequencing issue?
Well, that, in our opinion, too, uh, you, even though there may be a document, a private document out there showing some potential access, that's not binding to this site plan, and it would require those property owners or those developers to come back, and possibly even to this board, depending on what they're doing, but at least come back through a site plan process, which might more than likely even require a traffic impact study, depending on what it is they were doing. So, just because that's shown on a private document, it's not ever been included in this, uh, in the documents that we have reviewed, and, um, it, it does not actually affect the site plan itself. The site plan is what you're seeing there. If those actions take place in the future, they will have to get permission to connect to those points that they showed on that, in that document that was shown earlier.
Mr. Dean, you're a professional planner, does Brookshires need two accesses on the Norris Ferry?
Well, let me just tell you that what we rely on very heavily when we're looking at these, is we're, we're talking to the traffic engineers, the experts, and we started talking to them very early on. Uh, and, so, to, to say whether or not there was a, a study to say they needed it or not, it was already something that was ever being considered from the very beginning. Um, it seemed to be very well-placed, based off of things we've seen in the past, but again, we're not the experts, we had the experts involved.
All right. Any other board members, questions, comments? All right, I think where we are at this particular point, and, and point of discussion, is that we have a choice of, of approving the executive director's plan as presented, or approving the request, uh, from the, uh, attorney representing, uh, this particular organization, um, on hand. At this particular time, will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny the appeal.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Curtis Joseph to deny the appeal, we have a second by Mr. Robertson. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Oppositions, no. That motion carries. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you for the insight, Mr. Dean.
At this particular time, we have item number twelve, case number twenty-one dash two-one-nine-C zoning request, alternative interventions. Is there anyone present from, uh, do we have Mr. Dexter Laverne, Burnham present? All right, um, board members, uh, what's your pleasure? You've had a chance to review the case study, you've had a chance to review the information as a result of our planners, um, going through and, um, investigating this request. Is there any discussion? I believe we're familiar with this firm, having dealt with them, uh, as recently as the last twelve months, and, and their efforts to establish businesses here in the city. Any comments? Hearing none, I believe we can entertain a motion if, if there's no one that's, that's present that has any opposition. Is there any opposition to this request, uh, on the part of, uh, alternative interventions? Anyone present in opposition? All right, board members, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Joseph, and second by Ms. Jackson, to approve the request on alternative interventions. All those in favor, please vote yes, oppositions, no. That motion carries. This particular time, I'm real disappointed, I don't see Mr. Bailey's name on the agenda. Mr. Bailey, do you have anything to present to us today?
Not in terms of co-text amendments, I believe I'll have a report later, once Mr. Clark, he's been-
All right. This particular time, uh, Mr. Dean, does, does the staff have any comments to make relative to where we are?
A few, like, just a few minutes, I believe Mr. Clark does have a couple of comments he wants to address this board.
All right, real good, we'll give you a chance to, to run down-
I will, I will, uh, talk about something that he did allude to yesterday. Um, we are working diligently on two major issues, one is the renters code, uh, there's been quite a bit of dialogue with the, with the stakeholders, um, and Mr. Clark, uh, is, you know, working with staff to come up with a recommendation that will probably be at least a month or, or two out. Um, we do plan at your next meeting, uh, as you recall, there was a moratorium that this body voted on, uh, regarding liquor stores. Uh, we have been working on a study, uh, we have already worked with Mr. Clark, we have a couple of more things that Mr. Clark wants us to do, and, uh, once we've accomplished that, we plan on presenting that to you as a presentation, uh, at the next meeting, but wouldn't be asking you to ask, to act on any co-text amendments until the following meeting after that. So that's, um, I think I've bought enough time for Mr. Clark to be able to speak from there on.
Thank you so much. But, uh, we had a couple of other things that, that I'd like to share with you, uh, I'd asked Adam, uh, to talk to you about, because it's gonna be quasi-controversial, uh, is the, of a progress on the residential rental registration code that we're, we set out, and it, you approved it, and you recommended it for consideration by the council, they remanded it back. We thought it was a great idea, uh, there was a lot of opposition during the process, so we have accepted the remand back, and we've gone through a series of, uh, reviews. I'd just like for him to give you an update on where we are right now.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Uh, as he alluded to, uh, since the remand over the last several weeks, uh, Mr. Clark, myself, and other MPC staff, um, have held multiple meetings with landlords, uh, uh, realty associations, rental management companies, home builders association, uh, executive directors of such associations, as well as many others I don't have time to name. During those meetings, uh, multiple concerns arose regarding the legislation that's in front of city council. Um, it's not limited to these concerns, but mainly had to do with the need for a rental registration in and of itself, any fees associated with such registration program, uh, inspection, and the need for such inspections, and the possibility of exemptions to such a, a program. Uh, after the meetings, and, uh, meeting with Mr. Clark, uh, to discuss our options, if he staff is leading towards, uh, the culmination of developing, uh, a requirement that all residential dwelling units, uh, would have a residential rental certificate of occupancy. Uh, said certificate of occupancy would, uh, would require an inspection prior to issuance, unless the unit or the property is exempt. Certain exemptions would include owner-operators of properties who only rent out single rooms within the dwelling unit, or properties in their entirety are under a mortgage agreement, or an insurance company would require yearly inspections. Uh, after a certificate of occupancy has been issued, there would be no renewal unless, uh, the said, uh, a new tenant acquired the unit, or ownership of the property would change. Uh, obviously, if a new certificate of occupancy, uh, was required to be obtained, an inspection would be, uh, required as part of that, uh, registration. Uh, the complaint-driven inspection process would still exist under this program, meaning that if a tenant or an agreed party submitted a complaint on said property, that an inspection would be scheduled to investigate such complaint. Uh, regarding the fees, we're still investigating those, uh, but right now, we're, uh, coming way down from the thirty-five dollars per unit to a more, uh, agreeable, hopefully, uh, five to ten dollars per unit, depending on, uh, the size of the property, meaning single, uh, units would only be required, uh, you know, maybe ten dollars, but on larger properties that had hundreds, maybe it's only five dollar per unit, uh, we're still investigating that. Inspections would still require fee after the third inspection, meaning that if a complaint was received, an inspection, uh, would, uh, have a follow-up inspection to make sure that all the validations were corrected, if a third inspection was required, then a fee would be assessed as part of that inspection. And so then the big question is, what about all the existing units right now? We've heard a number that there are approximately thirty-six thousand, and would we require, um, all those to be inspected off the get-go? The answer would be no, that in good faith, we would just require everyone to come in and register their unit, uh, possibly even with no fee charged at the beginning, and then the follow-up as the program continued, uh, then fees would be assessed for any new, uh, certificate of, uh, occupancy for a residential unit. Uh, I know that's a lot of information, just to come out, um, hopefully next month, uh, we will fine-tune some things to be able to give you bullet points, uh, and a presentation similar to what Mr. Dean was talking about. And if, Mr. Clark, you have any follow-up, you're more than welcome to add.
And like, like I've said to you, I like to keep the, the board informed, um, what we're doing, because, you know, the board was never designed to be involved in the day-to-day operations of the MPC, uh, office. The board is involved in the, more of the planning aspect, aspect of what we're doing, and using the master plan to encourage audit and development in the Shreveport Catopirish into the area, uh, in the past. Uh, we're very optimistic that tomorrow, uh, because, basically, we have jurisdiction still in the five miles outside of the city limits of Shreveport, based on a agreement signed between the, by the MPC Chair and the parish administrator, uh, that gave us the authority to, to continue to do violations, to continue to, uh, issue permits. But, the problem has come as a result of, there is no board that can provide, uh, any special approvals that, that are necessary, so there are approximately, and you saw some last month, uh, that there are approximately, uh, ten to fifteen cases that are just in holding, because we, you cannot, uh, address the concerns of property in the unincorporated area. Uh, I was looking on the parish agenda for tomorrow, it appears that they're gonna populate the board that they, they've already created and allow that board to begin work on the, uh, cases that, that are pending before a body. With that said, uh, we don't know how fast that's gonna happen, you've been established, uh, since nineteen fifty-four, this will be a totally new board that will be established, uh, probably, uh, in twenty-twenty-two, so, and we have very little information about how the board will operate, uh, and so forth, but I just wanted to share with you, because you gotta start hearing about this other board, and this new board will take both, uh, planning commission and zoning board appeals cases in the unincorporated area. So when you start, just, just giving you an update, so if you start hearing things about this new board, that's what's happening, we don't know when the new board will meet, uh, it will just consist of five members, uh, and they will all come from the unincorporated areas of the parish. If, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to attempt to answer them. If not, uh, I don't wanna forget, uh, the zoning enforcement section, because they've been doing some wonderful things. At each meeting, I forget there, Mr. Andrews, but-
Yes, sir.
I did not want to forget the zoning administrator, been there and been forgotten a number of times, so I know how it feels.
All right.
So I wanted to make sure that we get an update from zoning enforcement.
All right, how y'all doing today?
Good afternoon, sir.
All right, well, as Mr. Clark was saying, you know, we've been doing some things, and zoning enforcement, we've been trying to get some compliance from these different big-box companies, as far as getting their parking lots straight, overnight parking of these trucks. So a lot of that has come into play, Walmart, actually, they're redoing their parking lot, or they submitted some site plans and had to make some revisions. They're going to add some landscape islands to the one on Pines Road, possibly to the one on Mansfield Road. Have you noticed, well, y'all probably don't notice, but there are not as many eighteen-wheelers parking overnight as they used to be. And as far as businesses goes, our commercial businesses for the month of January, from the first to now, we've had fourteen COs issued, commercial, I mean, home-based businesses, we've had sixteen COs issued, and two temporary COs issued, and that's all in the city. Also, our inspectors, they've been busy, they've cited, they've had sixty violations for the month of January in the city. As you know, in the parish, we're only doing complaint-driven violations, we had five of those, and we had one home-based business open in the parish, no commercial. Any questions?
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Clark, back to you.
So now, I've cleared up everything, it's clear as mud, Mr. Joseph, but I just wanted you to truly understand why we work, because things are going to start happening pretty quickly, and it's important that the board is mindfully aware of everything that's happening, because although it will not directly impact you, there will be some impacts upon what we're doing, and we work for you as the MPC staff, and that will continue to be the situation, unless the city council determines that they want to make the MPC a city department, then we would be functioning under the CAO and the mayor. So there are a lot of things that are happening out there, that you need to be mindful, but if that should happen to happen, just so you can be in contact with whomever you think you need to be in contact with, that would take away all of your authority, and all you could do would be recommend board approvals to the city council. I see, and I always like to remind you, Mr. Chair, in case there is a request for public comment, I see Fred John Perkins out in the audience, and I don't know if he's here. John has been a supporter of the MPC for a long time. You know, we don't always agree, and that's what makes life wonderful, but I didn't know if he wanted to come and speak, and take the three minutes for public comment or not.
I'm John Perkins, five-seven-two-six, South Lake Shore Drive in Shreveport, Louisiana, just outside the city limits. Thank you. I just, I can't believe everybody else left, it was just starting to get interesting, and I know some of you guys, but I became fascinated with urban planning, and started to write about those issues, and I've made a commitment to spend more time here with you guys, so that I can follow more closely. So I appreciate your patience with me, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Board members, at this particular time, it's an opportunity for you to share any comments, concerns. I do want to thank, ask Mr. Clark to thank the staff for pitching in for those vacancies that are currently, we're experiencing upstairs with the staff. I know we don't see it directly affecting us until we start getting telephone calls from clients out in the neighborhood. I don't get any, but some people do, and when you do, and if there's a slowdown, there is a reason for it at this particular time. Mr. Clark, if you care to repeat that, that'd be fine.
Yes, sir, thank you. Real briefly, Friday of last week, Ben Mahler, who was a planner one, resigned. It was my understanding that he had ran his course in Louisiana, and he wanted to return back home in Missouri, so he returned back home. And James Jampa, who worked in community planning, had applied for a job in St. Louis, oddly enough, in St. Louis, and he got the job. So on Monday of this week, he left and went back to, he left to go to St. Louis, in order to start work for that municipality. So, we are, we are about to possibly assume some additional responsibilities, we're three staff members short, we have been working frantically. I will share with you, I can share it with Stephen, Adam, and Reginald on a daily basis, it is extremely difficult to get planners to want to come to Shreveport. And I think we all know, because of all the negativity that's associated with Shreveport, it does not make it easy for someone to want to relocate, to come into a hostile environment, but we are trying with everything we have to attract some young planners. Ben and James were just incredible. They were energetic, they were excitable, just like Austin is, and Emily, which is, she's probably back in the audiovisual section, because she thought she had gotten beyond that, but as we lose staff members, there's not an executive administrative assistant to try to keep the executive director on the right track. He's off track a whole lot of times. I look at Mr. Sater sometime, and I know how important it is, it's not the same type of situation, but I know how important it is for someone to be keeping one on track. So, those are some of the things that are going on with us, but we're very optimistic that we're going to be solid as a rock come March. Now, I don't know if you wanted to talk about the last resignation or not, Mr. Andrews.
About the what?
The last resignation that we received on yesterday.
Well, I can do that, since you brought that to my attention. Those of you, if you've checked your emails in the last twenty-four hours, you should have gotten a copy of a letter from Ms. Lauren Newbert, as she officially resigned as a board member of the Shreveport Metropolitan Planning Commission, as of this week, and that's why she's not here. Chris is not here, because he's on the job in New Orleans, otherwise he would be here today. But I wanted to make you guys aware of the fact that Ms. Newbert is no longer part of this board. All of the changes that are coming down the road, as Mr. Clark alluded to, could possibly start tomorrow, we don't know, but we'll be, put ourselves in a posture to roll, whichever way the ball rolls, and continue to do what we do for this salary that we get once a month from the city and the parish, that we enjoy going to the banquet. I do want to say to Stephen, Mr. Jeans, to Mr. Adam, to Reggie, guys, sometimes we're always thinking different people about what they do, but we want y'all to know, we understand how hard you work, and how many extra hours you put in, to keep this ship afloat, and we appreciate it. We don't get called, I don't get called, and when I do, I recommend that they call the staff, because you're the ones looking at it on paper. I don't make decisions on the telephone. I tell them that when I do get a call, I need to make my decision based on what I hear and what you've sent to us, when these guys are standing out in front of this microphone. And I applaud each one of you, in that it appears that you're doing the same thing. So thank you for what you do. Any other comments? I need a special motion, Mr. Joseph?
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is now drawn, thank you.